Howie and Don Fisher, and certainly thank you all for taking the time out of your schedule to be with us here today. And I'll turn it over to you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is your fourth and final module with respect to the Unified Development Ordinance. As you know, staff has been working on this with our consultant for probably close to two years now. This will be the final work session we have as it relates to the ordinance. And I believe Brian will be talking about a little bit later in the presentation what our timeline is as we move forward. But with that, I will turn it over to Brian Matthews, our Growth Management Director.
Thank you, Sidney. Real quickly, just as Sidney said, this is our Module Four. Our consultant Kirk Bishop with Duncan Associates is going to give you an overview of Module Four. This is primarily development standards. And it is the final module in the UDO. The other three are posted on our website and available for public inspection. This one will go up for public inspection after this meeting. And then we will obviously put it to task to have our public hearings and our meetings for possible adoption. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Kirk Bishop with Duncan Associates and let him go through Module Four.
Thank you, Brian, and good evening, Commissioners, Planning Board members. Good to be here again with you tonight. As you've already heard, I'm finally going to present the final module of this process. Noted, it's been about a two-year process, some people accept, so I think I'm just deliberate. But I've been really fortunate to work with your staff and sort of carefully considering issues and trying to strike the right balance in terms of providing you with the toolset to move you forward as accounting to accommodate responsible growth and development and recognize the rights of property owners in the county, and yet provide you with a toolset that allows you to deal responsibly with issues of growth and development within the county. And we're hopeful that in the end you'll find that this ordinance strikes that right balance. This is, of course, a comprehensive update of your existing development regulations. It is entirely new development. The modules that have been presented today have dealt with all of the articles but for the Development Standards Module, which is the real core of tonight's presentation. We've also included the definitions and a couple of new features in the ordinance that are precipitated by the 12 Mile Creek wastewater treatment plan expansion efforts that I know you're well aware of. So I'm going to hit those highlights in tonight's presentation. The Development Standards Article 60 is something that in older conventional ordinances might be referred to as the subdivision design and improvements. We purposely chose Development Standards to more sort of holistically address the types of regulations and standards that might apply to, of course, new subdivision developments in the county, but other development even to already planted land. The article's new or modified features include a comprehensive listing at the beginning of the chapter that describes in some level of detail the types of improvements that may be required depending on what's being proposed as part of a new subdivision or development, anything from the survey monumentation to the streets and sidewalks and other typical public facilities and infrastructure improvements that are involved in a new subdivision or development utilities. It expressly states throughout Article 60 a number of things that are common practice in the county but aren't really written down in the ordinance, things like that once improvements are installed, the developer needs to provide as-built plans for those infrastructure and improvement facilities within the development so that those are maintained on file. Clearly describes the developer's responsibility for maintenance of all infrastructure that's provided in a new development until such time as it's taken over by a governmental entity, whether it's the State Department of Transportation, Property Owners Association, or some other governmental entity is established, that the developer is obligated to take care of that. Again, common practice but maybe not as clearly spelled out in their existing ordinance as it could be. Ordinance, after establishing the range of improvements that may be required in a new subdivision or development establishes some clear and predictable guidelines for the types of financial guarantees and security arrangements that might need to be provided to ensure that required infrastructure is ultimately provided in an approved subdivision or development plan in the case of, you know, a well-meaning developer maybe encountering a problem and that a governmental entity would have to step in and complete the improvements that there's adequate financial security in place to allow for that to occur. And also, in the case of streets and other right-of-way improvements, maintenance guarantees for the vermin-like installation of those improvements and their maintenance, again, until such time as they're taken over by another entity. The ordinance for the first time establishes, at least in the case of major subdivisions, that if there are improvements to be provided in that subdivision, whether they're stormwater facilities, common open space types of improvements, that aren't going to be taken over by a governmental entity, that a property owners association be established to ensure the proper long-term maintenance and care of those types of privately owned and maintained facilities within the subdivision. Again, this would apply to, obviously, larger developments where those types of features would be in place. As we move through the, what is typically thought of as the subdivision design part, you'll find in this Article 60 some additional guidance beyond the existing ordinance at least in terms of where flag lots can be used, the instances in which that's the proper response to either a preservation of a natural feature or the accommodation of some utility improvements or the other criteria that would dictate that a flag lot might be the appropriate response. A flag lot, of course, is one that's sometimes referred to as a panhandle lot that has kind of a flagpole and a flag, a minimal frontage along the street with a larger developable portion of the lot typically behind another lot. Establishes for the first time some block length maximums for blocks within a larger residential subdivision that are based on the overall density of that subdivision. As the overall density increases, the block length maximum decreases to ensure that the residential subdivision is more connected and walkable and that it's sort of easy to navigate within the development without going, you know, quarter mile down before you're hit the nearest cross street or opportunity for non-motorized transportation in particular to sort of run the shortcut. So those standards are in the ordinance today, but they've been revised somewhat, again, with an emphasis on the higher-density residential development being held to a higher standard in terms of walkability and block length standards. Private drives. Here, I think the ordinance attempts to clarify what is existing practice. The existing ordinance has two or three pages of material that attempts to describe the instances in which private drives versus public streets or even private streets might be allowed. And in the end, after considering several alternatives, what's proposed to be codified in the new UDO is your existing standard, which provides for a fair amount of flexibility for property owners, particularly in rural areas of the county, to use private drives instead of full-on public or private streets as a way to access their lots. And those private drives are allowed for lots that are exempt from subdivision, those that are 10 acres or more in size, and any lot of record as of the date of the adoption of this county's first subdivision regulations in February of 1978 are also allowed to use limited private drives. We have proposed for the first time some actual standards for what those need to be built to. Needs to be provided within a perpetual access easement is what the new ordinance proposes with a minimum width of 20 feet. And that, moving forward, that a maintenance agreement be in place whenever private drives are proposed to provide the sole access to new lots. Again, we find that to be an approach that's pretty flexible and reasonable and allows a good deal of flexibility. When it comes to development that'll be accessed from public or private streets, the ordinance places emphasis on consistency with the comprehensive plan, your new evolving transportation plan, as well as State Department of Transportation standards. Basically says all public and private streets, full-on streets, need to be consistent with those plans with the county planning framework as well as applicable state regulations. We proposed a new provision in the ordinance which clarifies that on paved streets, that the second lift of asphalt be delayed until a good portion of the subdivision has already been developed to ensure that those streets will be durable, that they'll typically have been in place for a while before that final surface course of asphalt is put on. It's a practice that I think is endorsed by the state. We see it in a lot of ordinances, particularly through North Carolina, and it's a practice I think that's becoming the norm, isn't specifically stated in the existing ordinance but is proposed in the new UDO. For large subdivisions, moving forward, and by large, in this case, I mean subdivisions of 50 lots or more, there are new requirements that the street network within the subdivision be connected to surrounding public streets, referring to public streets now, that where there's undeveloped property around the perimeter, that streets be stubbed out so that there can be a sort of interconnected street network within growth areas, which will help to sort of relieve some of the pressure on the major roads in the county and provide residents, new residents in particular, ways to get around and access both residential areas, shopping areas, and recreation areas through a variety of routes, through an interconnected street network. The ordinance for the first time spells out some threshold requirements for when traffic studies need to be provided with the development application. Establishes thresholds of 1,000 or more, a development that would, based on ITE traffic generation standards, produce on average 1,000 or more average daily trips coming and going from the development, or 100 or more trips during the peak hour. Also would apply to new schools with an enrollment of over 150 students are the proposed threshold criteria. And I think there are some other maybe general criteria within that framework. Spells out what needs to be addressed in the transportation impact study. And again, it's something I think that you all have, as a county, been able to get from new, larger developments over time, but this kind of standardizes the practice, kind of levels the playing field, and makes it a predictable system going into the future. When it comes to utilities, electric, gas, and other types of utilities within subdivision, the existing ordinance strongly encourages that new onsite utilities within a subdivision be buried or underground. The new ordinance would mandate that those utility-type facilities, not those along the perimeter and the right-of-way, but within the subdivision or development, be placed underground unless there's some practical constraint that would prevent that. Generally, with all of these new proposed requirements, we've built in, I think, language, exception language, some flexibility for policymakers or review and decision-making bodies to sort of decide whether an exception needs to be granted to allow for reasonable flexibility in the use of property under the proposed system. Now, that's all been Article 60, the Development Standard stuff. There are two new articles proposed in this fourth module. The first dealing with stream buffers or riparian buffers. This is one of two articles being proposed to be added to the ordinance as a result of the state review of the wastewater permit plant expansion permit. And I know that you all have been considering this and have been briefed on this in the past. The nice thing about these riparian buffer regulations as proposed here, I've worked in other places where these have been proposed from time to time, is I think they're very carefully applied to not catch people who are already, have really already gotten development plan approval or are in the process. It clearly says that existing approved plans, any plans that are in process as of the new UDO's effective date would be exempt from the requirements, but that moving forward, if somebody comes in with a new plan, they would be likely into, and this is within the 12 Mile Creek watershed area, they would need to comply with these standards. So there are, I think, some good exemptions in place. The standards, as they would be applied to new development plans coming through, establish different standards for perennial streams, those that hold water most of the year, basically 100 feet on each side of the stream, broken up into three zones of various restrictiveness. Closest to the top of the bank, the regulations are the strictest, the first 30 feet, basically undisturbed where you want to keep existing vegetation in place and allow only very minimal types of improvements for utility crossings and other sorts of things. And as you move up the bank, then the restrictions are open or it's less restrictive and more things are allowed until you get to the very edge near the developed property where there's any number of kind of normal improvements allowed. For intermittent streams, those that don't typically hold water year-round, only hold water in response to storm events, the requirements are down to 50 feet on each side and there are just two zones in that case. And again, I know you've been briefed on this, I know you've all had a fair amount of discussion in the past, so I won't belabor it, but those are required. The other new article, again, connected to the wastewater treatment plan expansion is the Schweinert's. Print the mouthful, I'm sure. And here, much like the buffer protection, existing vested plants are exempt, but moving forward, if you come in with an undeveloped property, you haven't had previous approval or you weren't in the pipeline, you'd be required to conduct a vegetative survey and see if these sunflowers are present on the property, and to the extent they are found, you'd be expected to propose some sort of plan for preserving a good portion of those or relocating them. In fact, it allows for relocating them to another site. But that's an entirely new Article 70. One thing that dropped into this ordinance that we had delayed introducing the first time around when we introduced the development review and approval procedures for rezonings and special use permits and variances and the like, are the master plan development approval procedures. The master plan development, you may remember, is the UDO's proposed replacement for your existing PUD or Planned Unit Development ordinance. It's a highly flexible tool. The way the approval procedures for this master plan development would work, which would become your zoning, is basically the legislative conditional zoning process that we introduced previously, where you all, as the final decision-makers, the legislative body, would be allowed to work with the developer, propose conditions, and to craft a kind of one-off development plan for this MPD-style district. There'd be a community meeting, very involved process, but in the end, a highly flexible tool, both for the county and for the developer to propose a kind of different zoning category that is in the book at all, but only after a good deal of public scrutiny and review. The definitions chapter, which isn't Article 70, I think it's Article 105, I've got it wrong here on the board, has a number of edits to your existing definitions, a number of new definitions, and frankly, we've eliminated a lot of definitions for terms that no longer appear in the ordinance because of the comprehensive nature of the overhaul. So as we've heard, with this module, we now have a complete draft. We'll be posting Module Four immediately on the website. We'll also be posting within the next week the consolidated draft that puts all of the material together in a single document for public review. We'll be having public meetings with the planning board, be back before you for hearings, and we'll be reaching out to the public through a variety of forums to inform you of any input we give from the county. Happy to answer any questions. Brian, I don't know if you have more details on the public part of it or this timeline, but.
Let me just tell you that our plan for public hearings and public involvement, this will go to the planning board September 9th at their regular meeting, actually, their meeting was on the 2nd, they got rescheduled because the Commissioners are holding a meeting on the 2nd. At that meeting, planning board will hear the information. They have the option of providing a recommendation at that time. If they do, then it will come to this board for a public hearing at your first meeting in October. And then for, if you follow your normal practice, you usually consider adoption at your second meeting. If the planning board were to decide to delay action, which they certainly can, then it would come back to you for a public hearing at your second meeting in October and possible adoption at your first meeting in November. So that's our timeline. We'll be working with different groups, trying to get the word out on the modules that are available, and obviously putting it out there to get any feedback from those individuals ahead of time as much as possible. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. We also have for you tonight the comprehensive plan update, as well as the multimodal transportation plan presentation from our consultant, and they'll be going right after this so we can kind of keep everything in line, the comp plan, transportation plan, and the UDO, so we're all working in concert. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Brian?
I do have one, just to, let me back up and thank staff for your time to go through this in a lot of detail with us one-on-one. And this thought, question has hit me, so I'm not trying to ambush you, Brian. Under the street section that Kurt were talking about earlier on the presentation, he talks about the result with an average daily count of 1,000 vehicles per day. We're also building in there the requirement for connectivity. Does that take into consideration those outside that development that could be utilizing those streets, or is that limited only to those on that are built?
Only to the development itself. Now, you're talking about traffic impact analysis requirement.
Correct.
That is really specific to the development itself. So they're proposing a development that would yield that amount of traffic, that would trigger them to have a good traffic impact analysis.
I would add on to that as an addendum, that would be the threshold for them doing the study. Once they hit that threshold for doing the study, they would sit down with your staff and decide what sort of background traffic considerations should they build into the study. So the 1,000 or the 100, the 1,000 ADT or 100 PHT gets them in the door to do the study, and then you can discuss what the study area found versus the background traffic consideration.
And that's a good point, Kirk. I don't want to dismiss the fact that DOT will be part of this process, obviously. We need their input as well.
Question. Will that also, the communities that enter into a smaller road have requirements that those roads be able to handle that kind of traffic?
That's a tricky question. The development is not necessarily restricted from occurring if the roadway itself has capacity issues. Understanding capacity is generally intersections, not the road itself. And so what you look for are what are the level of service issues at your intersections. So the ordinance does not prohibit a development from being approved if there are level of service, if it's eroded from, say, a C to a D, or if it goes from a B to a C. It doesn't stop the board from approving it, but it gives you the ability to negotiate if you feel it's appropriate, improvements that may be identified in that traffic impact analysis. Will it stop it? No. But can the board negotiate improvements? Yes, you can.
Any other questions?
I think as Commissioner Thomas indicated, you all have each had about an hour and a half to two-hour briefings on this module, as well as in addition to the work session we did.
Hi, Kirk.
I'm going to let Joe Lesh introduce our consultant land design for the project.
Yeah.
Brian?
Can you turn the light on so Joe's not in the dark? And Joe is our transportation planner. I've been working on this project about a year, I guess.
About a year. We started in July 2013. And I'll be real quick. Kate Gears is the land designer, is the lead planner on land use side of the Quidditch. Mike McCaskey was StanTech, and he'll be talking about the multimodal transportation plan. So we've been doing this a little over a year. We've had two public meetings, I'm not sure how many advisory committee meetings, five or six advisory committee meetings. A lot of input, a lot of staff input, and these folks have done a good job so far. Give it up.
Thanks, Joe. Get us where we need to be. I'm missing the Boy Scouts tonight. Last time, the Boy Scouts were here. All right. We know what we're going to talk about tonight for the majority of time is the multimodal transportation plan. I know you haven't seen a lot of that information before, so I'm going to introduce Mike and let him come up and walk you through a lot of the recommendations for the transportation plan, and then I'll close out with an update to the comprehensive land use plan and let you know what's changed since you last saw it. And just so you know, we are in kind of our plan documentation phase. The products of this process are two deliverables. One is a multimodal transportation plan for the county, and the second is an updated comprehensive plan, which includes an updated future land use component. And those are the things that we kind of highlight today. These documents are very complimentary, they speak to each other. The comprehensive plan includes the transportation plan, kind of 30,000-foot recommendations, and then the multimodal transportation plan actually gets into the details of all of those recommendations. But they're very complimentary, they do speak to each other. And so with that, I will let Mike jump into the transportation plan recommendations, since you haven't seen that before.
Perfect. Thanks, Kate. So Joe and Dick had asked us, and Brian had asked us, to kind of highlight some of the salient points, about 20 minutes, 25 minutes, but if you have any questions, let's make this a little informal, since it's really the first time you can digest so much information. We do have a draft report, and we've submitted a couple copies to Joe and his folks. I think you have another round of edits to possibly go through, and we'll just go from there, but we'll have that to you guys, digital and hard copy as well. Okay? So I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we go through. Just to qualify our assumptions, Joe had asked us to kind of highlight some of the higher-level existing conditions, where we're at in terms of transportation in Union County, how well are we doing, that sort of thing, and what does the future look like? And then some of those base assumptions, how did that inform some of the recommendations that we've had? As Kate alluded to, we had good, healthy collaboration with our steering committee, and it was a good diverse group, she did touch us up on the back. We had a good representation from, you know, the EDC, economic development folks, the airport was represented, residential folks, stay-at-home folks, and even the farming community. So good diversity and not just honing in on the growth problems that you have today. Equity was one of the reoccurring themes that we had to deal with. Honing in on some of the growth strategies and activity knows what I mean by that. You've heard a lot of the description of the comp plan recommendations and doing better in terms of protecting our environmental, natural, and our mainland resources here, and that is focusing our energy on development aspect nodal base, increasing density and density, intensity and density of land use decisions in the nodal points, the neighborhood communities, community centers and the like, that's what we're kind of building it on. One of the things that we did at the inception of the study, and it's kind of articulated in the state of the region, that's basically our existing conditions, you know, what we started with, and you guys really did a good job commissioning this kind of a collab- And you guys really did a good job commissioning this kind of a collaborative comp plan and transportation plan because you had a lot of moving parts. You had a lot of, the transportation plan for Union County in terms of the rural area was done kind of separate and outside. I think it was done by NC DOT as well. Then the urban area. What I mean by that is we're partners in partnership with the regional transportation folks at CARTPO, formerly known as MUMPo, and they make a lot of those decisions. But their plan only went through half of the county. And so what their plan had and what your plan with the CTP in Union County really didn't match very well. So we tried to go through that vetting process, and that was very, very important to our outcome. Really focusing at the end of the day on roadway, bicycle, pedestrian, and transit recommendations, and we're going to jump right into that. So how well are we doing today? This is a really quick synopsis of your travel demand model, or the tool that we use to look at congestion, and that's all this means. Yellow means we're getting pretty bad in terms of congestion. Red means we're over congestion or at congestion. No big surprises to you, US 74, Old Monroe, a couple other radials, those are problems today. Okay? Moving the clock ahead by 30 years and just doing the existing and committed projects, which there are only three of them on the books right now, moving that ahead, this is what we're going to be confronted with. Are we keeping up with congestion? Probably not so well based on the level of development that we see, especially in the western portion of the county. Nothing new to you guys. But we also aren't putting a lot of emphasis on improvements to our infrastructure as well. We only have three or four projects in the local transportation or the regional transportation improvement program, one of which is US 70 bypass, Old Monroe, I think railroad extension. I think Providence Road has a couple of widening improvements as well. So are we keeping up with it? Not necessarily. That's what it looks like. What does that mean in terms of travel time? In layman's terms, it takes us, and I think when I posted this up here, I think I got a laugh or two when you did initially, this is AM peak travel time from downtown Monroe to downtown Charlotte. And if anybody can do that in 55 minutes, you know, I'll probably give them a $100 bill. So all kidding aside, though, using that travel demand model, this is what it's showing in terms of delay, and that's a serious implication. Moving the clock ahead based on existing and committed projects that we have on the book, that travel time will almost double to 100, 105 minutes, if you will, going from A to B to the same location. It's really the influx of development, the influx of increased population, and of course, that translates to cars on the road. This map actually highlights, it's kind of the final product of our recommended transportation plan, and we did try to adjust a lot of the capacity and operational deficiencies that are there today. And this really is showing our committed projects, 2040, our recommended projects that we'll go through now. Okay? So we're doing a good job addressing capacity deficiencies, but we also would be remiss if we didn't address some of the modal aspects, and we'll get into that. That's one of the things we heard again and again from our committee folks, as well as the general public. Performance measures, yes, this is for the, I guess, the practitioners, if you will. They want to look at numbers. How well are we doing and are we addressing the issues? We're also, we realize, I think, from the previous comp plan, we're increasing the level of development and the population for this area of about 50,000, and that was just because of the process that Kate and her folks went through with the steering committee as well. So I think realizing, and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't identify what this really means, and if you take a closer look, it's really this number here. How well are we doing at relieving congestion as we develop our communities? And by focusing your energy on the nodal aspect, the focusing on community centers, on activity nodes, on neighborhood communities, and increasing the density of nodal points, we're actually able to do a better job decreasing the per capita vehicle miles of travel. Okay? If you have to go a less distance to go from A to B to go shopping or to work or the like, we're keeping them off the road. It's a simple thing, and we're not putting any kind of infrastructure out there. We're just working with better land development policies. Moving the clock ahead, well, taking a closer look at what that means in terms of our infrastructure improvements, this is your roadway, official roadway improvements map. It may be overwhelming to you with all the colors, but any color shows that we're trying to make an improvement to that particular facility. Keep in mind, though, that the blue are actually multi-lane winding. We're going from two lanes to four lane divided. What I mean by divided means this is a council meeting. We're trying to protect the integrity of that roadway. They're not a whole lot when you compare them to the red and the green. The red simply means that we're improving the corridor. A lot of these roads out here are farm-to-market, two-lane roads. Some of these, especially the highlighted in yellow or green, are 18 feet wide with no shoulders. And even your farming community pointed out, hey, those are unsafe roads. We can't get our combines down the road safely. You have large trucks there as well. And we'll show a little bit of the accident safety stuff to highlight that. But this is your official kind of roadway recommendations over the next 30 or 40 years, even beyond. Let's face it, we're forecasting ahead some of the travel conditions, and we want to respect that. But a lot of it is focused on access management, cleaning. What I mean by that is cleaning up curb cuts. I think Kurt alluded to stubout requirements and, you know, keeping those driveways off the main roads. And so the green is just building it up to state standards. The green represents those two-lane rural roads that are narrow and no drainage and no shoulders, and just bringing it up to state standards. Okay? What does that translate? How does that translate to total mileage? This is really a synopsis of how many miles of improvements that we are making. A lot of the access management outweighs a lot of the other ones. We're recommending about 100 miles of four-lane divide, and that's based off of the capacity constraint that you'll see in the next 30 or 40 years. But more so than that, it's really improving the safety of the road through bringing it up to state standards. That translates to lanes. Just to help you kind of visualize what that means, green means multi-lane, four-lane divided or five lanes. Blue still is, remains at two lanes, very simple premise there. So we're not widening everything on the map. We're trying to be judicious about where we put our money, and as you well know, a lot of that development pressure is coming off that western section of Union County. By the way, the red is just the six lane of US 74, some of which are there. We also incorporated 3D visualization for cross-sections. Much like the UDO is articulating or professing, as well as the comp plan, we need to build better streets that are safer and can kind of built in with more of the bicycle pedestrian as well as the access management. And these are just giving you standards, and Joe is very direct with us, and we want to make sure that we identify right away. Let's face it, when we identify the footprint, we need to dictate a little bit more from the development community to do so. Maybe they put in a right turn, that'll eventually become part of a multi-lane widening section. This is just the rural lane. This is a lot of the blue lines that you saw there. Proper adequate dip section as well as shoulders that can be used for bicyclists, roadside recovery in terms of larger vehicles, or even pedestrians out there. Two-lane parking with sidewalks, this could be downtown Waxaw, this could be Wingate. Likewise, with bike lanes. Multi-lane, a lot of which, the top left corner is which we're seeing, you know, the Weddingtons, Weddington Road, if you will, and then the six lane down there. In terms of bicycle and pedestrian and transit, what we heard from folks were, let's not go over the top with it. You know, let's build, we don't have a whole lot of amenities today. We don't have a whole lot of greenways, a lot of trail systems. We like the Carolina thread, we like to emphasize that, and so we vetted that in terms of phasing and improvements of Carolina thread trail system, as well as some on-road facilities. But how does it all work together? A lot of these things are going to be built contingent with another or incidental to another widening or improvement project. Okay? When you get the boulders out there, let's get them out there at one time to build it right, build the cross-section right. First series of maps is really on-road bicycle facilities. Yes, there's a lot of color up here, but again, all of the red, which are really wide outside lanes, and all of the gold, which are outside lane, or outside, not lanes, outside shoulders, are part of an incidental project. Remember, those are the roads that we're trying to bring up to state standards, and we're trying to put in adequate shoulder sections there. It's the other facilities that we're trying to emphasize, that's a bigger need for in terms of potential on-road facilities, or even side paths, which are multi-use. These are off-road facilities. There's your Carolina Trail, the multicolored facilities. We wanted to take those in terms of implementation and action plan, kind of vet those where you're low-hanging fruit. That's, you know, if I was to guess, it's 60 miles of trail system that, you know, where do you begin with that? So we really hung in on a couple areas that are geographically, are set up to build such a facility. Maybe they have an existing greenway there, or it's easier to build, or we see a bigger demand because they're closer to populations. And that's all outlined in the action plan. Couple of the cross-sections are well for greenways. Obviously, you've seen a multi-use path, or in this case, a greenway or a side path, but it'd be on the edge of a roadway, and then more of a multi-use. We see a heavier use for beginner bicyclists, as well as bicycle and pedestrian or pedestrian walkers and jobbers. Transit, our big message there from our folks in our committee was, don't go over the top with it. Let's see what we have. Right now, we have very limited services. We have the express route on 74. We wanted to increase, we built it into phases, I think three phases still, if I remember. And one was really improving, what we heard was, improve this frequency in the headway along this corridor and extend it eventually further into Monroe. And that's really the first phase. Second and third phase include maybe a circulator in Monroe itself, more of a fixed route, something that people can rely on, with better amenities for bus shelters and information on ground, and then eventually extending that to Wingate. We also want to utilize an existing express service down to Waxaw, and that's an existing service that the city cap program has currently today, which is trying to extend that out there. But again, we didn't want to go over the top with it, realistic expectations, and all of these blend in nicely with some of the nodal activity that's highlighted in your comp plan. One of the more interesting facets of the study, we really had to do more with safety and hotspot program. This is a quick series of maps I want to show you because it really tells a compelling story. This highlights the crash frequency along major corridors within Union County. As you can see, red means bad, you know, yellow means it's bad, but red means really bad in terms of frequency. That's a number of accidents per mile basis that are happening on your corridor. No big surprise, whereas most of the traffic occurring, 74, therefore, most of the accidents are. But it's interesting about that, and of course, Providence Road as well. But when you look at the severity, you know, it really tells a story. Severity means how bad are the accidents, obviously? And we look at the rural roads compared to 74, 74 is pretty low. That's because of a lot of stop and go, not really high speeds, and predominantly, 60% of them are rear-end accidents. What's happening out there is stop and go. You see a lot of child, a lot of lights, signals are not the solution to everything. You see a lot of distraction, a lot of people doing this, and therefore, a lot of rear-end accidents are happening. But in the outskirts, in the rural areas, the two-lane roads, there's no recovery there. It's two lanes, and so the severity is much greater than it is on 74 and even Providence Road. So we thought that was pretty interesting. So what we wanted to do was take a look at some key nodal points, and from this, we wanted to select a series of hotspots, intersections that we could do a little bit more design detail and look at some remedies for either crashes or bad sight distance or old farm-to-market roads that weren't very aligned very well. How do we clean that up? From that, we realized that the top 10, probably the top 15 high-crash accidents, and these are all spot locations, occurred along 74. No big surprise, I see some smiling back there, but the reality is, we wanted to spread it out a little bit, be more equitable in terms of your constituents. So all the yellow highlights were where we finally selected those locations. And what we did with that was, we ranked them all, we selected them based on severity, but also the approximate location of the geographical coverage of Union County. From there, we wanted to do a little bit more design. You don't typically see this in a comprehensive transportation plan, it's all system level, but we think we're seeing more and more that NC DOT really values these spot safety, also hazard elimination funds, programs that they have set up to fund these smaller-type projects. How long has US 74 bypass been on the books? Probably more than I've been alive, you know? So the days of those bypasses are few and far between. And so it's these types of projects that they like to grab onto and run forward. The last one we're going to show you is actually one that they're programming, they have full funded, I believe, Joe, to move that project along. This one just highlights Weddington Road and Annie Oak Church Road. We're just showing some lanes, just some cleaning up, a little lane is there, including a roundabout at Annie Oak. We also have a roundabout here in a rural context. It's a one-lane roundabout, more of a gateway, but to kind of clean up the intersection itself, and that's Millbrook Road. Next one is Old Charlotte Highway and MLK, that's MLK east and west, and we're cleaning up the intersection with proper turn lanes. We're actually making some physical improvements to clean up driveways. Some of these intersections, some of these properties, which you see in some of these, I won't point it out, one of them had six driveways, and it was, you know, private development. Why they have six driveways, the more driveways you have, the more conflict points you have. Let's do a better job of allowing more predictable turning movements. And this actually adds some laneage all the way back. Another roundabout, and really cleaning up a five-legged awkward offset that you saw up here, and again, one lane. We didn't want to overpromise what we could do out there, but very reasonable application for a rural context, or suburban, which will become suburban. That's Lancaster Highway and Rocky River. Another major intersection here, Roosevelt Boulevard, Morgan Mill, cleaning up redundant driveway access too close to the intersection and putting in proper turn lanes there. And cross-access, cross-access between a budding property, complementary property that should have access, so you don't dump everything on the road. The last one is kind of a super street. For those of you that don't know that, it's kind of controlling left turn lanes, and this is actually, it went from a level of service F minus minus, level of service being like a school grade, A, passing, cars are flowing nicely, F, you're failing, you need to go back to school again, repeat the year. Well, this in case is level service F minus minus, the intersection itself. And then, of course, is Rocky River and 74. They're actually implementing this, I think, fully funding. This is the project that they're fully funding. When it's all said and done, the operation will improve from a level of service F minus to a level of service B and C, and allow cars to more continue to be in motion. But we vetted all of these locations on a one-day field reconnaissance, and I think Joe was with us that day, as well as NC DOT, so they have a lot of buy-in. Because of that, I think a lot of these can move forward much quicker. Last couple slides I want to show to you is another deliverable that I think is going to help our planning practitioners. One, we call these project sheets. We're developing 50 of them. I think 30 of them is for roadway, 15 are for bike and pedestrian, and about five or six are going to be for transit. We wanted to show you these because our clientele are valuing these more, just as much as the hotspots. What we're trying to show is a lot of existing conditions. They're independent project scoping sheets, and they're front page, back page, and they provide about as much detail as you, as the policymakers need to make an informed decision about prioritization. So we've got about 50 of those that are going to be in a separate bond report for you guys to use. A lot of information on their existing conditions, safety implications, we have volume information, we have reference maps, vicinity, and then the actual physical improvement, as well as the associated cross-sections that we have. In this case, we're just going to replace that with the 3D dimensional cross-section that we had. And then really go through a checklist of improvements that we're recommending for that particular corridor or for that particular mode. Last thing, we do have an action plan or an implementation plan at the end of our report that does a good job of defining each project, not all of them, but each project in terms of tiered improvements, highest one being the interim, and then long-term improvements for both bicycle, pedestrian, roadways, and transit, and also giving them the cost implications, probably cost estimates for that, and then responsible party, who's responsible for this. And all of that is well drafted in the implementation action plan. Won't go into too many specifics, but that's kind of a summary of where we're at. I'd be happy to take any questions, or we can wait until after you. I'd be happy to take any questions, or we can wait until after we kind of present the final round of comp plan.
Any questions?
I did have one. In particular with the pedestrian and bike trails that you alluded to earlier, to be quite frank with you, bike trails is one of my pet peeves, because we're expanding DOT right-of-way or at least finished surface in order to accommodate something that don't pay road tax. And when we know that DOT is headed down roads, I think Commissioner, 2019, I think it's supposed, we're supposed to break even because of fuel deficiency. Where does that money come from for those lanes?
Yeah, it's not necessarily landage, but I will say this, you know, a lot of the accidents that are occurring in the rural context, there's no provisions for that. So, you know, we're seeing a lot more pedestrian-related, whether it's a walker, or whether it's a cyclist out there. And I will add to this, our obesity rate, our heart disease in this, in this country is by far 10 times greater than it was 50 years ago. And what we're not paying, it may not be subsidizing today, but we're certainly subsidizing the health industry, are we not? And so there's probably a bigger demand from our constituents, and we heard from the public, for having those types of amenities out there, whether they're on-road or off-road, to be, to build healthier communities. And so, yes, you know, it's going to make costs a little bit more to do it right the first time, but we're not retrofitting it. But we're also not adding lanes, we're adding maybe a two or three-foot shoulder for that. But that's a good point, everything costs money. But bottom line is, we have so much development that has occurred here over the past 20 years. I went to UNC Charlotte, I worked down here, I worked with Joe 20 years ago, and, but I have never seen such explosive development potential than what's happening in Western, in Western Union. But have we done a good job of requiring from the development community to pay their fair share, if you will, of the impacts to transportation, both on roadway, as well as bike, ped, and even transit? So we're playing a lot of catch-up, if you will, to make those roads safer. It's kind of a roundabout way of addressing that, but, you know, we don't, we don't ask them to subsidize for our roadway improvements, but indirectly, we're paying out-of-pocket health issues.
Is there, to go along with this, any thought in giving us some guidance on what roads that we should even allow bicycling? We talked about roads with 18, 18 feet, very narrow, and a lot of our roads are very winding and hilly, and it's an extreme safety hazard for the bicyclists, as well for, you know, you think about what, what happened if you actually hit one of those people. And, you know, right now, there's no limitations at all. I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, you know? I agree with you, you know, we need to get out, and, you know, when I was a kid, you rode your bicycle, you didn't ride your ATV. We need, we need to provide for that, but we also need to provide for the safety of people.
That's right. That is a great question. And I have three kids, and I would never put a bike lane on US-74, because that tells my nine-year-old child, here, here's your helmet, go, you know, go ahead and travel on 74. So there are certain roads that we do want on-road facilities, there are certain roads that we want to keep them separate. And so what we've done, out there on the on-road facilities that we have out there, we've identified, to me, I don't want to put on a five-foot dedicated bike lane to anything that's 45 miles an hour or higher. The reason for that is we're giving them a false sense of security. Let's face it, bike lanes are really intended for the intermediate or beginner, if you will. Guys, like myself, I'm not an expert cyclist, but I need to dedicate a lane. Let, let the spandex folks handle those short little, you know, wide outside lanes and fight with traffic. But for majority of us, we're not, that's not what we're catering to, that's not what we're designing to. So anything that's major arterial, anything that's greater than, that we anticipate, greater than 45 miles an hour or greater, I would not advocate on-road facilities outside, other than outside lane for the experts. I would do it, I would apply those on-road bike facilities for neighborhood streets, for collector streets. Collector streets are lower volume and shorter distance. And they're typically, I don't know if I even know of a collector street that's posted greater than 35. And so that's where you want to put your bike lanes. That's where you want your kid to travel there, and because the speeds are much lower, and the conflicts are much less. So we, when we developed our map and our prioritization, we made sure that we put bike lanes on the facilities of a 35 or less, and then just wide-out shoulders, or off-road amenities for anything greater than that. Like Old Monroe, I would never put that out there. When that gets to be four-lane divided, I'm not going to put, we're not recommended like bike lane on that. So that's good. So it really depends on the type of facility and the posted speed limit.
Question, since we don't, since the county's going to build roads.
You have the authority.
Where's the, where's the pathway for the efforts that we're taking here to develop a transportation plan in terms of communicating, translating, moving that, those efforts into the road building, road improvement system? Is it through our MPO representatives, or, it's not MPO anymore, but our representatives through that process? Is that the way to do it, or we? How do we benefit from this effort?
Yeah, and that's a great question. How do we move forward? That is a great question. I think it's really three-fold, I think. One is, yes, CARPO is the new acronym for MPO. I get confused with that as well. But we'll work with them, and I know you have representatives that are voting on the TCC and the TAC. I think, Joe, you're representing on the TCC, is that correct? When they go through the prioritizations, that's the higher-type facility. Now they have the new SPOT program that develops state, regional, and divisional projects, and they all have their own criteria that they use. Joe will figure that out with Dick and Brian. And those are the higher, larger-type facilities. The other aspect is doing exactly what we did in this project with NC DOT, the Division. They have a different set of standards, they have a different set of funding that they can get their hands on to. But they want the projects to be smaller. They're the ones that are moving ahead the 74, super-street right there, the intersection improvement that we highlighted there. That's the other aspect. Give them the smaller-type improvements. One of the things that we're recommending out of this plan, I think Joe had brought it up, I think they initiated this several years ago, but to take another look at intersection improvements, much more broad than what we did, but to the same level of detail. You had a name for it, Joe, help me out.
Traffic Operations Plan.
Traffic Operations Plan, it's really a hotspot for problem intersections. And work with Division Office to get some of those things funded. The last aspect, and probably where you have the most leverage and the most authority, obviously, is the development community. You may be out of the road building business, but you can dictate a lot of what happens in terms of, not necessarily impact fees, but in terms of how they contribute in the impact road facilities that we have. So those are the three aspects. That's good.
Any other questions? Back to you.
Great. Thanks, Mike. I just want to take a couple of minutes and update y'all from, to some of the changes that we made to the plan that, from what you had saw last time. So I've got copies back in my bag for you, but after we saw, met with you last, we went back to our advisory committee, and we vetted again and shared with them some of your comments. And one of the big things was, let's, let's further segment the types of commercial or non-residential centers that we can support with this future development pattern. So where, when we met with you last, we had three main types of development, or centers. We had the rural center, a neighborhood center, and a community center. And those all have different square footages about the type of non-residential uses within those centers. But when we went back to our advisory committee, they kind of felt like that doesn't really meet all of our needs. So we added a new classification, which is community center small, which really helps kind of some of our, our smaller, like around Marvin and what we're proposing at the intersection of Rocky River and 84, some of our smaller communities where there could develop like a grocery store-anchored retail center that might have some non-residential uses around it. But the square footage is such that it's not going to be, you know, your Monroe Mall-size commercial center. I think what I want to point out here, and I'll come back to this, is that today, around 4% of your land is in non-residential uses. And what we're proposing is that with this kind of future land use pattern, that increases to about 16% of land that we reserve in a non-residential use category. And this is just, again, a planning framework. You have to come behind it, or when development proposals come through, to actually make those changes. But what that's saying is that we are anticipating this county to grow by a lot more people and a lot more rooftops. And for us to really have a balanced land use, to then have more of a balanced tax base, we need to plan for these non-residential and employment-generating areas. And this is what this land use concept really gets at. It's looking towards the future and identifying those areas that are more appropriate for non-residential uses, and those areas that potentially could support job growth. And so on the job growth side, not surprisingly, you have the airport, around the Duke readiness site down in Mineral Springs, Sutton Park, and then at the conclusion of, or where the bypass would come into 74. So making sure that these areas are kind of the priority areas. And then the concepts that we showed, shared with y'all last time, those are things that the Economic Development Group is really using as marketing tools to actually market these areas to potential employers, and letting them know that, yes, Union County is thinking about where we can grow in terms of employment and supporting those areas with either infrastructure investments or roadway improvements. A lot of the roadway improvements Mike mentioned coincide with some of these development nodes that have more intensity or density of uses. The other big thing we wanted to make sure here is that, you know, y'all are third in the state in terms of agricultural production. That is a huge part of this community's economy, and respecting that moving forward is really important. So everything that you see, so I know it's kind of hard to see the different colors, but light yellow is kind of single-family, we're going to continue to develop as we are today. Light green and dark green, these are priority agricultural areas. These are areas where sewer service and water service does not exist today, and is not projected to exist within the next 20 to 25 years. So without those infrastructure investments, you really are limiting the amount, the intensity and density of development in those areas, which these are also some of the areas where a lot of the larger farms are. So making sure that we're respecting the agricultural production in the areas that don't have utilities. Everything that's in yellow, orange, and then all the circles, those are areas that are either currently served by water and sewer, or could be easily served by water and sewer over time. And so the orange is the areas that are most, I'm sorry, let me back up, sorry. The yellow does not have sewer today, but the orange is the area that either has sewer today, or potentially could have sewer with some small investments. So we did an entire sub-hatchment analysis with your utilities department, and they're using this as an input into their next water sewer master plan update, to really understand what are those areas that potentially could be served easily and without a lot of infrastructure investments. And then we're reinforcing that with, yes, those are the areas that could potentially support some additional density or intensity of uses. The other thing we wanted to recognize is that, you know, the corridors, your bank corridors, 601, 74, 75, these corridors, because of the infrastructure that's available today, because of their connections to 77 or Lancaster County, these corridors could support potential employment in terms of warehousing and logistics. So we identified in the plan itself, what are some of those appropriate uses along these corridors? Maybe 601 has, 601 South has more of an agricultural warehousing and distribution focus, whereas 75 might have more of a, 75 and 601 North might have more of a logistics and distribution focus. The reason those types of uses can happen out there, especially warehousing, logistics, they don't necessarily need water, sewer, to have those facilities, because you're not processing or manufacturing in there, but you can warehouse or ship goods with just water service. The other kind of couple of things that we talked about, just really looking at your area for mixed residential today, you've got, I think it's, the majority of your land is, or the majority of your residential is single-family homes. That's going to continue to be your majority. You're always going to attract families with kids that want a single-family house. But you're also needing to diversify your housing stock and offer a couple of more alternatives to accommodate aging baby boomers, to accommodate singles. And we're not talking about high-rise apartments, we're talking about patio homes and town homes. So where are those most appropriate? They're going to be most appropriate in your mixed residential areas. These are the areas that are closest to amenities, closest to existing town centers or downtowns, but also closest to your main transportation, transportation routes, and these are the areas with existing sewer. So those are kind of the big, main highlights from the land use plan. I know y'all have, we have about 10 minutes before, I think you're supposed to go into a closed session, so I can stop talking and answer any questions that you have.
We're good to about 6:50.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, 6:40.
Okay.
What is your level or means of communicating with various municipalities with this overall land use concept?
Yep, so we wanted to come to y'all first and kind of present our findings. We do anticipate, I guess the municipalities have been involved kind of along the way. They participated in our stakeholder interviews at the beginning of the process, and then a number of the staff planners from the municipalities have come to our public meetings and weighed in on specific things. And so once we feel comfortable with where this draft concept is, we'll go back out to those staff-level planners and share with them kind of the findings, or the, this latest draft of the concept plan.
Any other questions?
All right, thanks. Real quick, just in terms of next steps, we will go out to the public one more time and present them this draft concept. And then similar to the development ordinance, we will go through a formal adoption period with you, and a formal public review period. And I'm sure those dates, we'll get those on the calendar, I'm not sure if they're on the October, or September, October schedule, but we'll want to get the public meeting scheduled first, and then come back to you for that first review and then final adoption.
All right. I move with recess, a special meeting reconvened at 6:25 PM in the Board, Commissioner Comfereen, First Corps, Union County Government Center, all the tables.